Okay. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Community Committee Board of Education for order at this time. It's six o'clock, real call, John.
Charles Moore.
Here.
Chris Mortensen. Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manoelito.
Yes.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Chief. We have four members who do have a warrant to conduct business, to steward the legislature, the regents, and the municipal officials.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the flag and the state of Mexico, to the people, to our representative Congress.
Thank you. Let's go to item number two, approval of the agenda. And under approval of the agenda, whoever moves to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting. Um, Mike.
Present long members of the board, we'd like to remove item six B, and we will put that back on the agenda for next meeting, when Giovanna would like to be here for that particular budget transfer, and she's unable to be here tonight.
Pushing. Um, Mr. Mitchell. Take a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the deletion of six B.
Okay, motions to be made, real call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manoelito?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Recognition, student staff, we don't have any, and at this time I'd like to do a moment of silence for Joshua Hart. He was a student at Gallup Center, and he died coming Friday, so let's do a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Let's go to item three, approval of the meeting minutes. Board members, you've had time to review the meeting minutes for the President of the Board. This is the March fifth meeting.
Um, I would like to make a couple of, request a couple of changes. Excuse me. Under approval of agenda, uh, under where it says the last sentences, the last sentence, that Priscilla Manoelito spoke on item six, request to direct the Board President to get legal opinion before future meetings, and to get definitions, well, legal definitions for the word deconsolidation and redistricting, and direct the superintendent to get, to talk with P E D, New Mexico Secretary of Education.
Okay. David?
Uh, so, on my part, yes. I don't know if there's any other. Oh, one, one, I'm sorry, one more, sir, I'm sorry. Um, I believe there was a point in our conversation with Mr. Mortenson on C, I'll go up to number two. Under new business C, um, that the listening session that we were going to have would not reflect or be, um, I don't know, he said he was going to drop the redistricting and, um, deconsolidation issue, we would just have a listening session on, yeah, the district's well-being and what parents thought, um, thought of their area. And I don't see that indicated in here.
Okay. Those corrections will be made. Any places that need correction, I'll have John make those corrections. Just need a motion. Make a motion and, um, um, the question, John to make those corrections.
One more, sir, if I can find where Kevin's at. Um, I recommended up on top of approval of agenda, before the approval of minutes, um, my recommendation on the agenda items should be discussed before taking action, before the following, before placing it on the agenda. Before agenda action. Thank you, sir, that's all.
Pushing. I'm sure John made an order of those corrections. Need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the changes.
Okay, motions to be made, real call, John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manoelito?
Yes, John, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. For approval of the meeting minutes, let's go down to item four, consent, agenda items. I believe we all have time to review the agenda.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
The only thing I don't see on here is the road trip to California, is that one of, oh, I'm sorry.
It's on here.
It's four A three.
Four A three, thank you, sir. I saw the one on top, the color red over. I'll go ahead and motion.
Pushing. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda items, real call, John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manoelito?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Yeah, we approved those consent agenda items, and let's go down to the second circle. I believe we don't have any public comment this evening, reports, Mike.
Because of long members of the board, we have two presentations tonight. The first one, I'm just going to talk a little bit about them, then I'll have the individuals come up and present. We had talked a little bit about, in our budget meeting, about a new program, a new company, a new mentor. I'll say that we are contracting with, to help us do a better job with our substitute teachers. And so I had asked that, under the account for that particular presentation, give you an overview of the benefits, and I thought you'd ask some questions and get more clarification on what this will look like. And then I just want to make another comment before I have him come up, is B, section B, during our safety, planning our safety work session this last week, we had discussed and talked about ways in which we're trying to work with staff and train them so that they better recognize behaviors of students that are detrimental to them or potentially to others. And so it's an awareness topic that I wanted Mary Lynn Meyer to talk about those things in a very professional development way in order to help as one level of recognizing students that may be at risk for causing harm to themselves.
Fair Labor Standards Act. But now a substitute teacher can, um, work for E S S, serve our students in the classroom, as well as sign up to coach, and so they will not be limited in the number of days that they can sub each week.
And game workers as well.
Game workers as well, that also applies to game workers. And then in terms of training, E S S will have an onsite person in our district that will, that will serve as a support person for the schools and work with principals as well as substitute teachers to address any concerns that they may have. E S S also has access to online training for substitutes. So if a principal notices that a substitute teacher is struggling, for instance, with classroom management, E S S will go into the classroom, assess what's going on, and do in-person as well as online training.
Questions, board members?
I have one.
Priscilla?
Um, how much is this costing us?
So this is twenty-eight percent. Um, the direct cost that the district has right now for substitute teacher pay is at least ten percent. Um, so the service is approximately eighteen percent.
Of what?
Of, of the pay.
What we spend on the pay?
Which is, is that Giovanna's question?
Uh, it's, I don't know, we talked about this, it would be approx a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly.
And that includes the software, um, supports, and everything.
And is, is this contract for one year?
Yes.
Is it, so what, if, if it's not meeting, or if it's not up to par, if we're not satisfied, we can get out of it?
Absolutely.
I specifically wanted it to be one year so that we could make sure that it works, I don't want to be tied in for multiple years. Because I want to make sure that everything runs smoothly and clean, um, before we commit to anything further.
So is this something that should have been bitted out, or you guys just found it and said, okay, we're going to go with this?
So, E S S is a member of a cooperative that we are also a member of, so we did not go out for R F E. Originally, we thought that that's what we thought we had to do, but our procurement office was able to find a company within the cooperative that met our needs.
So, is there any other school district in New Mexico that is using this? And could they provide us with feedback, have they provided us with feedback if this is credible, if it's good?
Right, and so we are actually going to be the first school district in New Mexico that utilizes E S S. But in, as a part of the vetting for the program, we did contact school districts around the country. I personally spoke to directors of personnel, four of them actually, and asked them about the program and the support, and they felt that it was a win-win for everybody involved. It's relieved the schools of the administrative burdens of managing substitute teachers. It provided more training for substitutes. We, as a district, will know exactly what our fill rates are, because really, we just want to make sure that there are high-quality subs in classrooms when a teacher calls out. And so I feel confident that it will work, but if we find that this program is not effective for us, then we will definitely, um, see if we can work with another company or go back to square one. But I do feel confident that we will be able to make it work out. Before we, um, as part of our preliminary discussions with them, they also came out to Gallup and from the county, drove around, um, to really get a sense of our community and our needs. We made it very clear, um, our district is huge, and so we need to be able to provide trainings, not just in Gallup, but also, um, out in the county. And so they actually have trainings already scheduled to help substitutes and game workers transition at Reina, at the R U, and then to Hachy. So that will happen this month.
Oh, one of the things that we always get a complaint about, um, and a concern, I couldn't say complaint, concerns about, is, you know, a lot of our substitutes are just kind of warm bodies in the classroom. And, you know, are they going to provide individuals that can teach math, that know math, that could, or English, or science, wherever the subject may be, to help them not really lose so much, especially with, you know, teachers that are out for weeks at a time, you know, and continue to have that, um, training that they need to let our children continue on to learn, um, instead of them just doing worksheets, or some of the, some say they don't even do nothing at all. They just catch up on other classrooms, homework during that time. And I think my second question with that, will they still have another teacher, a team teach? Uh, I got another certified teacher assisting them with, during the day?
Yes, we definitely want the company to work with the schools. So the substitute teachers really ultimately are going to benefit from the support that are available in the school. So our, our substitute teaching pool is our substitute teaching pool. And so if they are subbing in, you know, algebra two, and they're not really great in math, we really need to make sure that there is a master teacher that's able to help them with the lesson plans, to team teach with them, um, to observe them. Um, we need supports from the schools in order to make sure that the students are still learning when a teacher is absent. Um, one of the really great benefits of E S S also is that, I actually had a conversation today also with a teacher that just retired this year, and she said to me, I could sub more now because I won't be penalized for working for the school district if you are contracting out of E S S. And that's absolutely right, and this is a teacher that wants to sub five days a week now instead of just one or two. So I'm hopeful that our recent retirees will sign on as a sub for E S S and work for us often in the classroom.
Um, a couple of recommendations, Mr. Hyatt. Um, if we could get a breakdown of the, the cost, I think I would really, I would really like to request numbers on how much this would cost us, and then maybe compare it also to our, our, how it has been in the past, um, to see that how much money we are saving. And the other recommendation is if we could have maybe a mid-year review on this and another presentation next school year, would be my recommendation. And then I would really stress, um, to our subs, because this is one part of the safety, um, meeting that we had, is to ask if we can, or if E S S can also provide mental health, um, awareness, S O S, signs of suicide, Q P R, um, those kind, and, and also the safety protocols of our district. So, because I know that when a sub is called, they may not really know, you know, what code red, code yellow, where the evacuation drills are, or fire drills, you know, those kind of things. So if we could see if we can get those, all of our, not just these, all of our subs, I guess. Um, but that, those would be my three recommendations.
President Long, this is Manoelito, we actually did discuss that safety issue with our substitutes, and so we talked about making that a part of the process when they get enrolled into the program, possibly through our Safe Schools Program that we already use, so that they get that kind of training, um, so that right off the bat, as soon as they're hired, and it's a part of the hiring process. So we did, we did discuss that, and we're on the same page with that. With respect to your other recommendations, that's the information we can get to you yet, and have a review at the mid-year.
Thank you.
I think we can have a review, because we started on April sixteenth?
Yes.
I think we do, and have some type of review at the end of the school year, if it occurs in the May.
Absolutely.
I think that, you know, this is.
Of this year?
Of this year, yeah. And I really think that this is going to be a great activity, you know, I think, you know, show a whole lot more fairness. I mean, you know, I know there's a lot of schools out there who, secretaries have their favorites, have their relatives, and there's the subs that are called upon every day, and all the others that are kind of left out from, I think this would be a good, a good way to go about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Next, I'd like to have Mary Lynn Meyer come up and for item B. And she is the coordinator for counseling and labor, and for our safety committee and several things.
Thank you. Mr. Long, board president, members of the board, Mr. Hyatt, and honored guests. I have the vast privilege of coordinating counselors. Part of that is to provide training. I'll talk about the training first, then I'll talk about the services we provide, and then I'll go into our future. We began the year with a change on executive functioning. Many of our students present with A D H D, have difficulties with executive functioning, that's your protocol. And we talked about how to recognize those difficulties and how to address those difficulties from a standard-based practice. What do you do with students who zone off? How do you redirect them? How do you bring a student with stupidity back to attention? Those were some of the things that we addressed. These are some of the factors that often land our students in trouble. So our counselors are trained on executive functioning and how do we handle it. We also provided counselors with further training on the Student Assistance Team Program, the SAT, emphasized that their role is to facilitate and not to write the programs. It's the teachers who write the SAT process programs. Though the trained counselors are supposed to look for in terms of interventions and progress monitoring. And then the year passed with it. We had several losses in our community. And we began to see after looking at those losses, and also after looking at the Y R S, to be particularly disturbing. We saw that we needed to address more on anti-bullying and on suicide. So we began to put in place both for the students as well as for the parents, Q P R, question, persuade, refer. It's a systematic training that everyone received at Tohachi, the R U, Gallup Mid, Gallup High, and Chief and G W T O, those were the schools that were being requested. We had trainers come out from the Department of Behavioral Health and Immigration and provided that training. We also had people from the veterans program provide that training. Our largest group of people in attendance was the chief manager, we had about sixty people. After that, we averaged twenty for parents. We've also provided anti-bullying training in our schools, both for the staff, for the students, and for parents. Again, we started off strong at Gallup Middle School, about sixty people, and then out, as the numbers grew, the numbers decreased in veterans. For parents. All of our students have that training in the middle schools and the high schools, and we are continuing with SHAR Day, so I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with it. SHAR Days will be going out to our elementary schools beginning next Tuesday, and doing anti-bullying training, and also doing it in a traditional perspective, because it does have a strong traditional perspective. We are training our counselors on motivational lecturing. Motivational lecturing is a strategy in which rather than talking to the student, you ask appropriate, open-ended questions to help a student disclose to you what their opinion is. We've had a one-day training, and we will be having in the summer, the community as well, a two-day training. We've had an Alex training, where we not only went to the Alex of the American School Counseling Association, but we went to FERPA, and we went to FIPPA, and we had assistance from R M C H presenting Mr. Nye. In addition, we will be having on the twentieth of April, a morning training on the limited scope of license insurance. We have too many people, not only within our schools, but within the community, who are operating outside of their boundaries in terms of license insurance, and we are going to be providing them a training that will define and limit those boundaries. In the afternoon, it will be open to the community, we will have a training on supervision for those counselors who are going to move towards their L T C. That's your license, professional clinical counselor license. We have ten of our counselors moving in that direction right now. They're mostly at the middle school and the high school, and we have one who is at the elementary school, not a few. They are moving towards their L T C Cs. The reason why we need to get these people licensed with L T C Cs, and it's a national trend, is that we need to have more mental health in the schools, not just counseling or academics. So we're moving in that direction. And I will be providing training in May on how to prepare for the M C B exam for them. In addition, on May second and third, we're having a Matrix training for our counselors. Matrix is the tool that is used for substance abuse and drug counseling. In addition, and these are some really awesome things that we've been working on and we're continuing to work on. March twenty-ninth, we have the L G M T conference, it's the second annual conference. We will have Ms. Stokes presenting on safe zones. Dr. Weston Thomas is presenting on gender issues from a traditional perspective. Eric Bulley will be looking at suicide from a perspective. And then we have a presenter who will be dealing with anti-bullying and how to safeguard our students who are out of the teacher. It's an all-day conference, and the community is invited. And we'll be in the boardroom and in the environment, so we'll have this. We have in September coordinated with the Attorney General's Office to have community, school, staff presentations on cyberbullying, cybersexing, and cybertexting. I was very excited to get with the presenters because in the last year, we have had, on the average, two students a week at G I M C for suicide aviation. Much of this stems from Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, and Messenger. Much of the suicide aviation begins at night in the home. And then students come to us ourselves with press, and then we take action. We are also part of G I M C's Z S I Zero Suicide Prevention Grant. So one point five million dollar grant over five years, that will bolster our training in suicide prevention. And we are working with Dr. Rubio, the doctor from down there. In addition, we are proud and excited to say that we have collaborated with GIMC to provide counseling every Wednesday after our students who are on contract for substance abuse or alcohol counseling. We will be providing good counseling, and that will begin March twenty. And we have nineteen participants. It will be a bulk for the counseling. So our students present, they can join the group, and we'll be ongoing for six weeks. In addition to the trainings and the collaboration that we've been building across the community, our crisis team goes out anytime of school, suffers an extreme loss, and they're there for everyone for a few days, and they often imply the elimination department being around help services when it is extreme. Our counselors and our staff have given many opportunities to attend the Cheryl Lockwood's training. This is a group training program that is highly research-based and has been around for a long time. And she's constantly updating it. That's where our new counselor. In addition, we have provided, with the exception of thirty-one, with the exception of four schools today, who have not had the average shooter training, and those schools will have it within the next couple of weeks. We are having active shooter training for our central office staff and more associated with the central office on April thirteenth. We have done an intensive, right here, intensive survey of the central office building and the safety issues that are presented. We will be presenting those to the LTCC recommendations. And we will be having higher drills and lockdown drills in the high on ground bullet cases. We will also be doing yearly palace trainings and active shooter trainings because that's a part of our safety plan. We have to maintain that fidelity to the safety plan. One thing I want to say is that oftentimes, when we take our students to GIMC for suicide ideation issues, I often go and I often meet with the parents and talk with them, and then I invite them to talk with the kids. I was there last week. A six-year-old from one of our schools had a complaint for suicide. And he kept crying my soul words. Six-year-old, my soul words. He said, "How did you cause it? Just don't blame me, just don't situation." And tells sick and unhealthy come to school and tell us to give them the help. We can work with CYMP. They've done a training for our counselors, but it's not enough. These issues are not school issues, they're community issues. And that's why I think I've gone out of my way with permission to collaborate as much as possible with the community. Because we have to work with the community. We have to do everything we can to improve the training of parents and the education of parents. And right now, we have a planning process to that with the community. Our stakeholders are NSPI, GIMC, and the Department and the City of Gallup. Without those people, many of the trainings we have, we'll have to either go without or find some unimportant improvement. So, any questions?
Mr. Nye, board members?
I do, sir. You talked about providing training to the counselors. We had, we kind of struggled with the Rouge mid-school. And I finally got some documentation from Mr. Hyatt on forms of kids that are suicidal ideation, that have suicidal ideation. And even referral forms. Are those in place at all schools? Could someone check on that? Because that's one thing that we struggle for because they didn't know what forms, what documents needed to be filled out. The other thing I wanted to mention is you, you did a list of trainings that you provide to the teachers and the counselors. I would like a list of that training. Those trainings that you provided are going to, or that in the future are going to provide. And then the reason why I asked of that is because GIMC, and I'm glad they're partnering with you, but that's just another resource for Gallup area. We need collaboration at the other areas and the rural areas. And having that resource in Gallup, again, you guys are very fortunate. But we need to see what we're doing out. I know we have Crown Point in the Rouge area. I don't know what's offered at Tohachi. I don't know what's offered at Rama. But if we could get resources that you're talking about that help in all these other areas that the city gets, we need those same resources out in the rural areas.
And I understand your concern, Mr. Nye Leo. We are working with Crown Point on providing, they're providing us with the anti-bullying training. Now I'll work with Board Presidents. Ray will work with GIMC. We've tried to set up a collaboration with Sage, but they've been difficult to work with. They haven't sold into us as everybody.
Tohachi works with?
Tohachi works with GIMC, which has a lot of GIMC and they are providing services.
You said everybody was trained in bullying. Who is everybody?
Counselors, students, and we have parents at Gallup Mid, Tohachi, Chief.
Could we extend that to bus drivers and kitchen staff? And continue that training because everyone, to me, is everyone in our building. And I think that bullying is a big issue. And I know, I know, even to this day, there's rules, there's policies, there's a no bullying tolerance in our school district, but our kids are still being bullied. And we still have parents complaining, we still have children complaining. And the number one complaint is, "No one is listening to me." "I told the counselor, I told the principal, no one is listening." So, and that's where all this other issue continues to bill up on that student. So, to have that kind of training, to me, and with talking with the principals, it's just a norm now. It's a norm in our, in our staff that, okay, that's a cutter. That's somebody that, okay, put a blind eye to it, ignore it, maybe it'll go away, maybe it'll stop. No one is reporting those signs that we're supposed to see and report and try to get that individual help. So, I'm glad for the funding of the one point five million. And hopefully that training is extended district-wide to help service everybody. I know that when we ask for assistance, like I even asked the Vanna Six to come out to assist us, I can't because that's not my service area. So, I know those kind of funding, there's some restrictions to them. But I think if we could continue to have the partnership and try to find additional funding as needed. And I think until we start seeing less, I think I'm forwarding Mike's stuff almost every week on stuff. And, and I think we're, I don't know, I don't know. We're even going to assist in providing some training for the mid-school and to our high school, and then to our parents in our community. But I think, you're right, it's a community effort, and we need to continue to do what we can. But I would really like that list of the training, the past trainings, and also to continue to do these programs out in the rural areas. And I'll keep advocating for that until, I see there's equality. Because right now, it's the same thing. I don't know what, what our students out here get at David's Geeks because we have to hit them early. And who's implementing the bullying program here? Who's implementing them at Rama? You know, I just really want to see that equality district-wide.
And I do too. I've reached out to Crown Point, and they're working with us. I will continue to do that, and I will continue to report that to Mr. Hyatt. This is why, this is why it's a great advocate for our making sure that we have equality.
It's not equal, it's not equal right now, I will say that. But I think on March sixth at nine-thirty, we're having an Eastern Agency Crisis Response Team at Elm Haven in Coolidge. I invited Mr. Hyatt, he won't be able to make it, Dr. White will be there. So I'm hoping maybe if you're available, or not, you can send a staff to attend that meeting to try to get the Eastern Agency involved.
That would be great, and I'd like to put that on, because it's something I've been trying to work with. Like Mr. Long said at the beginning, it's a vast district. And our kids deserve better than.
That's it, sir. That's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
First, Ken, with a presentation on the faculty. Ken. Just one other quick note. John Cradock was a teacher at Safe Earth, and understand, passed away today. Over, yeah, today. So Ishikawa, my brother, and Lincoln, your neighbors involved that. She put eight of us, it's current, I guess, illness. So, if they can, they can, so they can hear prayers. And Ishikawa, you find Ishikawa, I work over me, huh? Good, you made it. I hear something that I need to do. Board reports, board members?
I did attend a multicultural event at the Mayonera High School. It was something I didn't expect. But they did a very awesome job presenting all cultures, food, bands. It was very interesting, and I was very glad that I was able to attend, and I'm looking forward to learning more about it.
Again, thank you very much. Yeah, I don't have to kind of raise my voice now. The other thing, I wanted to report two things, board members. We did, Mr. Mortensen and I attended a meeting, a budget meeting with Superintendent Hyatt and July. And again, I would like to say thank you to July and Mr. Hyatt for always making everything transparent. They provided us with a lot of documents on what's going on budget-wise with our district, and where the funds are going, and the new things that are on the way, and just a lot of the eligibility and the things that we're going to be implementing. Like I said, the raises, we went over through some of those legislative changes that are happening in our district that were passed through legislation. Just looking over my notes about some things that we discussed. But basically, the big, the big things is those implementations. And I don't know, if you guys are going to get a copy of some of the stuff that we did. I guess you can ask Mike, there's a lot of legislation stuff that were passed. I don't know if you guys are interested in it in the first place, but there were things that, SB three thirty-nine, House Bill on the table. So these are just some things that I wanted to mention that was in discussion at the budget meeting. Again, it was a wonderful meeting, and very informative. And the communication transparency, I'm very thankful about. We did ask a lot of, both Mr. Mortensen and I, to need a clarification on some stuff. And we both were very impressed with the outcome of that meeting. The other meeting, I'm very thankful for the majority of board to be there again for the work session. And I think that was something that was very beneficial. It helped us realize where our district is at. And the safety board calls and the partners we have with our law enforcement. I think that just having that in our back, that we learned, it was a big learning process. I still haven't had the chance, Mr. Hyatt, to email you on some of the other things that I wanted. And I know, I'll get to that. And hopefully, we do have maybe mid-year, beginning of year, or even sooner, to go through and see what the follow-ups have been, to do an update on all the suggestions and the stuff that were reviewed. There were some things that I want to request from that meeting, but I'll email those to you and to the other board members. I did attend the Mayonera Multicultural Night, and I can't imagine what to say. It was very delicious, and I can't say it. And I think all of the different nationalities that were represented was good to see. And I think our community members that came out, really enjoyed themselves also. And the gatherings were great, seeing the different heritage of our communities. Really brought that word in our mission statement to life that night. And I'm so thankful that our Mayonera took such a wonderful approach and made it a success. Thank you.
Ken, thank you for those reports. Thank Priscilla for recording the work session, sorry I had to do it. I think there's still a lot of these we have to do to ensure that our kids are safe. And they're in this room. Maybe we still need more work to be done on that one. Maybe another meeting on that. Maybe too much longer to see what everything is that. But like what's going on right now as far as school security is concerned? I can't go anymore. I think the police, they told us there was thirteen entries over there. And right now, there's just one entry, I think, right now. And there's security at the gates. That's nice. I like that. The next one, notices and communication. If you read that, put your sound. Shang, Kim, I'm going to go with you.
Let's go down to action items. Number one is, this is six A now. Mike?
Does all members of the board, now Gerald, releasing this superintendent, critical instructions? Just to take questions, if you have any, on approval or our help textbooks for next year?
Just to take questions, if you have any, um, on approval for our health textbooks for next year? President of all members of the board, Mr. Hyatt, any questions?
If you give a quick overview of the process.
Yeah. I got that. So I, um, for the elementary health book, there was one textbook, the youth's room. Uh, middle school, there were two separate textbooks, and there were, there were three for high school. And so what happened in January is each school site established a textbook adoption committee. And then, uh, in December, so the month before that, samples were ordered. We ordered the state record adoption list, to get a variety of material review. And then, uh, textbook adoption committees were invited to attend the textbook adoption display presentation. So, um, the board, February 20th to the 23rd, and March 6th to the 9th, the books were all just going in the boardroom. And there's actually an ad right here, it's called a form C. It's part of our, um, textbook policy for the district. This is a parent form, um, that we use for parents to fill out. Okay. So that happened, which was...
Fuck loud. Now you know why it's all taped up, Gerald.
See that, okay. Uh, and then, from February 26th to March 2nd, um, all of the displays with the books went to five different county sites. So we went to now opening of Crown Point, Toachi, and Peru. Did not go off the Sejai, the evacuations with the Sejai teachers coming to Crown Point to give to our parents. And then once again, the same opportunity was given to our parents to fill out the form I'm showing you, to give their book, the textbooks at the county sites.
How were the parents notified?
Great question, so here's how we did it. So they, we put our flyer out, Facebook. We also put the flyer in the journey on the school website, and then the flyer was sent to principals to give the students to take home the parents. And so we, we did all those avenues, to make sure that the community was aware of this taking place. And then, um, teachers completed a form, it's our RUBR. And I have it right here, it's just right out of our panel, see if they're used as a district, for the teachers to grade the textbooks, so it's just a RUBR they follow. And then what happens is the scores are tallying by, um, my department. It's really good, Dr. Kubak, Michael Kubak. And then that's the recommendation we go with, the ones that really the parents and the teachers suggested. And then we're here tonight to mention all the books that were taken and chosen.
Did you talk to them?
Yes.
Um, even with those five, I didn't even get to see it. So I don't know what my son did with the letter, or I wasn't paying attention to Facebook. But, um, the question I have, sir, is, um, can't even read my... So who's gonna, who's gonna teach this? Who's gonna, who's gonna be teaching these in the elementary school and the secondary school levels?
So the elementary level is dug through PE. So the PE teachers teach the health department. It's part of the way that it's done. And then the secondary, at the high school level, so talking back through Gerald, it's, it's the health teacher. They usually have a health boss in our district where they teach the course specifically.
And mid-school?
We don't offer health right now at this point in the mid-school, um, it's not at the high school level. So that's some internal conversation for Anna about, um, how that might look. So one of the things that we're looking at potentially, having some help from them to PE at the eye of the business school.
So these books, are they, are they, do they touch anything up on mental health? Or is it just body, like, physical body stuff, or, I mean, what?
I don't follow, follow that to answer that question. I can look into that and back to you, about what specifically you taught, if it, if it affects the happiness, I can look into that part now.
Or even if it's, um, sexual activity, or, you know, is it, is it those kind of, is it that kind of health? I, I don't know.
Sorry. So let me, my mother, she said, you're saying, I think it does this, this one experience, I look at the, the, I don't exactly what.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to get that, that would help.
Perfect, well, get your body books. How's that sound?
That'd be yours, Sam.
That's fine, I'll take her, that is.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, any other questions, George? Thank you, Gerald.
So that's an action item. Is there any more?
One more, one more question. Where are these funds coming from, to buy these?
State funds.
State funds?
And sometimes we have to supplement that, but state funds is the primary source.
Okay, and I know there's gonna be someone to ask us out there, we have funding for this, but why do we not have funding for math and English? And I, I kind of know the answer for the couple of rotations. Or you're trying to get away from those, we should need you to come to those, you know, different things like that. But I just want that clarification for the record.
So each year, except for the secondary, it's part of our adoption, so what happens to PE health? PE this year, um, was E, was E L A last year. So English language arts was last year, and I'm not sure what next year is. Science and math, next year, so rotates each year where those monies are available for. And I think the adoption cycle is six or eight years, six years, yeah.
Wow.
Yes, that's, so to your other point, that's why we try to really focus a lot of additional resources. Six years is a long time to purchase textbooks.
I think that, I think that's a legislative issue we need to... We don't have enough books. I mean, they want us to get these books, and we don't have money. They need to give us more money for these books.
I disagree. No further questions, right?
There's a legislative priority item there.
I make a motion that we approve the books.
There's been motions were made in my home. Rowan Hall, John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Mitchell.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Cal?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. Can I? Thank you, board members. Let's go to 60, acknowledgement of 2016, 2017 audit report. President of all members of the board, uh, we are excited to have J.J. Rico here, our auditor, and you know him, about all. And he will be helping us go through the audit, and so that we can ask questions, and it's managed.
What, we're not gonna ask? You want me to read this and?
No, 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 no.
No, this is, this is the acknowledgement of the report.
This is for sleepless nights I'm drafting.
So we're not, we're not taking any action on this, right? We're not approving this or nothing?
We, we are.
I'm not approving, I, I'm, no, I haven't even looked at this.
Good evening, um, thank you for having me. Uh, again, my name is J.J. Rico, with the professional services. I do apologize that, uh, working, uh, the copies earlier, I know I forwarded, uh, some copies to the, the district in electronic copy previously. So, um, it sounds like this is just an acknowledgement tonight. So, um, so, and, and wanted to go over with you, members, the, uh, I do like to say, I do appreciate you having me here tonight. Uh, the, the audit report was reviewed and, uh, in detail during the exit conference, uh, with the audit committee. And, uh, so going through, we've gone, uh, what the board goes and holds, uh, what, what the results of the audit order this year. Um, first of all, I want to congratulate the, uh, health and these county schools. Um, we will go over some findings a little bit later, uh, maybe in a few minutes. But the audit report is significantly improved from the last two years. Um, as, as we go through this, I, I have to cover some communication items that are, are required, um, for, for the audit. Um, basically, there were no change in estimates. This year, there were, last year, if you recall, there was a difficulty performing audits by the Johnson O'Malley program. Those issues are no longer, um, those have, so a lot of those have interest, they're part of a couple of small items that will go over here momentarily. Um, there were no correct or incorrect statements, so basically, any audit, uh, adjustments that we, we indicated, they were made. Um, now, there are some that the, the district doesn't have to make, and those are rules. So regarding, basically, from what PE would report to PE towards required in this audit report, um, the district does require the recognition. But they are required to oversee them and approve them. Um, no miscreants with management. Management, this is a representation that says that they're responsible. None of these are the district's financial statements. Uh, they're not, uh, regular professional services, mine, or yours, so the district does take responsibility for them. And to our knowledge, there's no consultation with other accounts.
There, a moment, let me get just one copy of this out.
There are, you know, do you think what the state audit was actually, was it a piece of material housing threshold now? Uh, and that was applied to the, to the district's financial statements? The timeline has to do with, um, the, the deadline. The deadline has not changed, uh, they have changed for many state agencies, but for school districts, it is still, um, November 15. We will be, when, when changes to the state audit over 2018, tomorrow actually, uh, with the state audit office. And then, um, just moving forward, the district, as I hinted previously, the district has, has seen a marked improvement in reduction of findings from over the last two years. Um, and I apologize, but the handout piece is a little bit too small, and I realize how small of a writing is, but that kind of breaks down where, what, where the revenue comes in, what the expenditures are. And of course, most of the expenditures do have to do with education process, but there is quite a bit in operations and maintenance. With a district this large, and this geographical spread out, you're in the East End, um, you know, you, this, this district, uh, has many more expenditures that it has to rely on, not from federal money, or state money, and from local money that other districts do not. You know, just because of the geographical, um, pit, uh, mass of the district, you know, transportation, it, it is, is a, a much more of a concern and a, a challenge for the Alton County County Schools than Sejai Old Town School or Pastex Schools. Um, you know, as we, I was really pleased to hear, um, such a, a precise conversation, and such great questions from the board with regards to, um, the safety of the kids and behavioral health. Um, I just got back, uh, performing, and presented the audit to Pastex County Schools, and everybody looks at what happened out there, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, unfortunate issues happened out there. So just to hear, it's coming to everybody's attention, and it really starts at home. Uh, you know, at home, and, and before any of this type of issue happens, uh, it's really good to hear that, you know, leaders that are, that are addressing this issue report it becomes more of, more of a problem, not only in Gal, but in, you know, community as a whole. As we go through this, um, audit that we have submitted, is unmodified. That's literally three reports in this, this financial statement, that belong to regular professional services. And those are just the reports. Unmodified, unmodified audit means that I have, that's unmodified, okay? It basically says that materially speaking, and I tell every district, every district is, somebody is, is probably stealing, there's too many activity funds, and where, you know, someone's gonna take twenty dollars a year, and, you know, and, you know, material-wise, we, we feel not, there's, there's nothing material, as it heard. And therefore, we can give you an unmodified opinion. That does not mean we look at every transaction, where there's just absolutely no way we can do that to get it done. But the, the next side that we can look at is looking at your schedule of expenditure, okay? This year, we looked at IDB, Impacted Johnson O'Malley, Indian Education Program, and English Language Acquisition Program, okay? So we looked at five programs within the Galton School District that were in there, okay? And what we did there is we actually have to do a, a sample of all those expenditures, those revenues, and we have to test and make sure that they are in compliance with federal guidelines. And so when we looked at that, we, we were able to provide, um, uh, in this case, there were, there was finding of the Johnson O'Malley, um, the Johnson, this is what we're... There was, there was, uh, I'm sorry, there was, uh, in, uh, special education, the IDB, the idea of a program in which there was just a problem with the carryover ones. So we carried over too many, too many funds, and, and sooner or later, the debts start with reducing that money that we have. So I know that the district is addressing that, and that we're getting closer to, to, to alleviating that. So last year, there were a lot of Johnson O'Malley margins, and this year, that program is what, is not only clear by us, but by the National Nation and PDD going forward. Is one of the really good adjustments?
Oh, I was wondering, um, why these, why these five programs were selected?
Uh, I was just about to get to that.
Okay.
So the district in total expended forty-eight million dollars in federal programs, okay? And, and what happens is, the programs that we select for testing are based on a risk factor. We put all the programs together, and in this case, anything that was over, I think, one point two million dollars was considered a large program. Once we just sit down which are large programs and which are smaller programs, then we have to apply a risk-based factor into it to see which programs we can look at. And in this case, um, IDB, Impacted, those were both, and Indian Education Program, those were both, all three large programs. Now, another large program that we have, that, that we did what happened, was the, um, the School Lunch Program. And the reason we haven't, we didn't look at that this year, is we had looked at it in the previous two years. In one of the two previous two years, and nobody should have found those programs, okay? The Johnson, uh, the Johnson O'Malley English Language Acquisition Act are smaller programs. Well, because you also have a School Lunch Program, we substitute the best we can for that with one of those, those other two programs, okay? And as you can see, the, the Galton District, uh, the Galton County Schools were not considered low-risk. And I don't want you to think negative about us saying that you're not, uh, you're not a low-risk out of T. What that occurs from is when you have a finding in one of the federal, our federal test boards, which you had in the past two years. Um, when we have a finding there, we cannot say that it's low-risk. So all that means is that we're testing more of the federal programs than if you were a low-risk, okay? So if, if you're, if you're, if you're a low-risk out of T, I only have to test twenty percent of the expenditures for the programs in that district. Since you're not a low-risk out of T, I have to test at least forty percent of, of the federal programs. So that's where that comes from, okay? There were, uh, the last, I, the last report that I report on is reporting internal controls and compliance, and that's based on internal control and the compliance with the state statute, okay? And in that report, I don't pretend an opinion. That is a, uh, that is a... That is a, uh, that is a report in which I, I just report the items we found, and those come out as findings. Now, each individual certificate runs well, the financial statements, although the finding would be, uh, regular. The first item that we found was a new finding, this has to do with account receivable. And we found this in, um, in a couple of school districts this year where the, the request for reimbursement was taken larger than should be. And so every month or every three months, you request reimbursement from, um, the state or the federal programs. In this case, what was happening was there's a disapproval going on, reimbursement is requested, they're being disapproved. And then, in what we like to see is once you make the reimbursement request, we want to see that that, those months come in within thirty, forty-five days of the request. Well, this one was getting delayed quite a bit, and in some cases, we're willing to do the reimbursement request once, once for the whole year. And so I know the district has worked on that, and, and are, now, uh, the reimbursement requests are occurring, um, much more frequently. The second item has to do, is something that has been, uh, part of the findings for the school district for a couple of years now, is the activity funds, internal controls over the activity funds. There's always, as I hinted previously, with the, with the district, with this many schools and this geographical, geographical difficulty, it's gonna be hard and difficult for you guys to always have the activity funds, uh, on point. But I think that the district is making some new, uh, changes and some internal control policies and procedures that will, that will eventually get that, if not this year, within the next year or two, those off, off of us, off of the findings place. The third item has to do with employee files, and this is a very minor item, okay? This, uh, we have one employee file that didn't contain, um, the, the contract did not match the employees' pay. What happened was it, the file for the employees said the old contract hadn't been updated. Um, and so, so they weren't able to show us the new contract, it just wasn't in the employee files, so it was a little bit too late, and then I dropped it.
On page one fourteen, you'll see is the, the third part, no.
There were no findings on refunding it, and what you're refunding it is your charge. The charge was approved through this, this board. Uh, we also audited that along with the district, and there were, we found no findings with the company name or the charge. So, uh, last year, they had a finding with regards to segregation duties. And what really what they've done is, as part of their internal control processes, they've utilized district personnel to oversee some of their, like their adjusted derivative and help realize their proofing. Their, you know, their proofing, and then they're having the district personnel, some district personnel sign on on this as well. As well as some of their personnel, the, uh, their workers that have a financial background. So that's how they, they alleviated that. The last item is a federal award finding, which has to do with the period of availability, which we just indicated was a carryover finding, okay? That, that is the only, um, federal award finding that the district maintained this year. Which, I'll be honest with you, which is, is, is pretty impressive, given the size of this district, okay? Typically, I see two, I see at least three, um, federal award finding items that we see with the district. Doesn't mean you're not, you're not one actually, or we're not compliant, so because remember, we will be looking at different programs this year, okay? Look for your findings for two thousand and seventeen. If you look on page one fifteen, you'll see a list of findings from previous years. And it, it also indicates whether they're resolved, whether they're lies completed, so on and so forth. As you can see, the, last year, we had thirteen findings, this year, the district has four. And this, I know this, it's been no, uh, no small part or no small effort from the administration and the folks in different programs, and again, they cannot, we cannot do our job as auditors unless you're the district and the personnel, it's their job, and I would allow all that to put significant effort into clearing any of these findings. Um, as you know, one of the, it is especially impressive, given that last year, if you recall, because of some of the issues that the district encountered at the end of the audit process, the district actually turned it on planes, so you have to, in a truncated time, to give a lot of these items addressed. And they were addressing it the whole time we were doing the audit last year. So it was very, it's very good to, to see such a marked improvement from previous year. Um, again, I want to thank the district, I want to thank the board, um, for the opportunity to serve you and for being able to present this to see. With that, would I like to open up for questions?
Questions, board members?
I would please, thank you.
Would you like to do a quick one?
No, I'm okay. Uh... So you're, I know we had a different auditor before, how long will you be with us?
One week, I have a four-year contract to, uh, one year, yes.
Okay, um, so, I'm sorry for the surprise I have, because usually, um, I guess I asked Mr. Hyatt, there was an exit meeting that you indicated that there was. And when we, when we do, uh, especially with this, the audit, I think it's very crucial that a report is given back to the board. Um, I don't know who's on the audit committee, but it, it bothers them to me, um, that we didn't get, you know, uh, uh, even this. Uh, we usually have time to review this and look at it. Um, I wish I had very net service, so I could see if I pulled it up to see if I had a soft copy of it. But I think, um, I'm thankful that you're, especially that your review of the audit findings and the clarification. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Hyatt, um, how these audit findings, I know you, you mentioned some of the ways that some of them were already, are going to be corrected, but some were not. So I just wanted to ask a real quick clarification from our superintendent on how these audit, audit findings and corrective actions will be taken through our district.
President Long, Mrs. Mangalito, um, if you look specifically in each audit finding section, you'll see an agency's response, and that gives a very detailed response of how we, uh, of what happened, and leads into corrective action on how we're going to fix that. And that's part of every single audit that we do, um, and so I could go over each one. Well, for example, I think this is a great one, this last one we touched on, which, which is the sped carryover funds. Uh, if you look in the middle of that section of agency response, we knew we were gonna have an audit finding because we were having problems with the Special Education Department in, uh, at the state. They had a programmatic changeover in their staffing, they approved our plan, we're ready to spend. New staff came in, and they denied it, even though it had already been approved. Um, and so those are the types of things that you'll find within that section on every single audit finding. So with special education, uh, we just had another meeting with Special Education Department in the last few weeks, um, trying to get them to approve things because they have been extremely slow. Um, and I have been extremely frustrated with them and expressed that frustration to them, their supervisors, and also the Secretary of Education, Mr. Wiskowski. The employee files, continually, we have an audit that we do on the employee files, and we just missed, missed some. It just happens, we have two thousand employees, and people's contracts changes, they change. And so in a year, somebody could, contract could change, and we may not place that contract in file. Uh, it gets placed somewhere else, and if it's not in that file, as Mr. Gregor mentioned, then it's not a finding automatically, even if there's just one in that, when they pull those records. Do you want me to go through each one?
The activity fund?
The activity funds, we changed over this year to using Visions. And so no longer is accounting software used at each specific school site to manage their activity funds. That's one of the controls we put in place, so we can monitor that activity from central office. So we know when funds go in, and we know exactly, we have to prove them before they're expended. And that's a specific control we've been working on for years, finally made the plunge, and we're able to incorporate Vision, I-Vision's, our, uh, budget software, to make sure that we can have a proper control in place, so we can eliminate that finding. Again, that's a, it's a tough one, even with, even with that system, it's just like, as, as Mr. Gregor said, there's so many funds, so many school sites, and audit finding can happen again and again, even if we have those controls in place. Uh, but we are in a much, much better place than we were in the past. And as overall, you can see, if you look at the audit findings from prior years, since I've been here at least, this is the best audit, I believe, that we've had in the last three, four years.
Mr. Mangalito?
I have to agree, because I, I've been on the audit committee, and this is the recent amount of audit findings we have discussed.
Mr. Mangalito, members of the board, Jai, uh, I think, I think part of this, uh, part of the toward it is also looking at each finding. Um, Mr. Hyatt referred to the agency's response, but he can also, um, since we come up with order required, it can also indicate corrective action. So we're, we're saying, we're ready for the district to tell us, hey, who is, is exactly who is responsible for addressing this finding? And that is a new requirement, and something that we've, we've always required, and we've been handed into the, we have now had it, and it's required to be added to the, the report, and that way, before, like, even if you weren't asking at exit conference, which occurred on number thirteen, if you went on the last page, it indicates the, the members, uh, on page one sixteen, who is the resident from the, the district as well of the charge group at the exit conference. So, um, so it, it's very imperative that, that the district is there to can address this. Mr. Mangalito, as you indicated, um, is able to give us not only what happened, but who's gonna fix this. And, uh, I, I will be honest, uh, since we've been involved, the district calls us on a normal occasion, and if there's an issue that comes up, that's, that they say, uh, hey, um, Mr. Gregor, can, if we do this, put in this internal control policy, uh, does it work, does it appropriate, is this gonna be the state compliance issue and everything else? I cannot make that decision for them, but I can, uh, give advice regarding, uh, its compliance with state statutes and everything else. And I'm not sure, uh, if that was the case with the previous auditor. I know that, that we make ourselves available for those kinds of situations to the district, and I think it's, uh, I think it's helped out quite a bit.
Uh, a couple of things I want to ask. Do you give out, I know the previous firm gave the board members letters to report any kind of, uh, suspicion, any kind of, um, if we feel we've seen or believe that there's any kind of, um, wrongdoing with financial?
Uh, Mr. Mangalito? Yeah, and each of you did receive one of those, and I believe you guys, uh, sent the papers.
And, and I just want to say, Mr. Hyatt, I think this is, to me, I take, I take this very seriously. The budget, that's our responsibility, that is something we do, um, and I, I, I don't like, um... Because we, we're held accountable for these funds. And I, if, if there's nobody else that can attend this, either the audit or the budget meeting, please call me. Um, I would like to be involved, and if, if I can't, I'll let you know, but, you know, I, I really think that this is important. And somebody, we should have had at least two board members attending this audit exit meeting. And, um, and I think we need to be reported back to. I think it needs to be reported back to a whole, uh, the whole, the whole board, because this is, um, are, are all of our responsibilities as a whole body, so I would like to request that, sir. If, if you're ever in a bind, and you need another board member that's not on that committee, please, I would like to request to volunteer to step in for our board.
Absolutely, Mrs. Mangalito, President Long, Mrs. Mangalito. Again, nominations were made, Mr. Mortensen was one of them that was selected, and Mr. Shaw. Um, meetings were attended, the last meeting, Mr. Mortensen was a part of that meeting. Um, and we followed the process exactly as we have in the past. And this is not something that can be changed, this is something that we just received, uh, from the, from the state. And then we can continue to talk about it as long as we need to, to answer questions. It's usually done in a public setting, um, it's posted, and then posted on the website, once you guys have a chance to see it in the public meeting. But we can, we can do it differently in the future. Uh, whatever we can do underneath the law, when we can release it, and those types of things, welcome to do so.
I think my, my recommendation to you, sir, would be that, especially with the special ed, um, funds, I know that's an issue that we're, that you're correcting with PED, but I would like a follow-up on that, um, as, if things start to clear up, or, you know, what, what they see until these funds are, um, completely corrected, I guess. Um, I think that we need to stay in the loop on that and see what else arises. Of course, I understand about the activity fund, that's gonna struggle, um, for several audit, audits that we've been, we've been through. But I thank you, sir, for the report also.
Thank you, and please, please allow I to tell, to report that I, that I think this gets lost sometimes in the, in the audit process. Remember, we work through the board, I serve the board, and really, what we do, we become, we become the audit to basically put the district financial statements and let the board and community know if there are issues that need to be addressed financially. So please, if, if there are any questions, if I'm here today, and you have questions that arise or, or, or come to, to light, that you, that you would like for me to answer, please, Mr. Hyatt, Ms. Hanks, have my direct number, including my cell phone number, and please, you are more than free to give me a call anytime, uh, and let me know if there's any questions, just as Mr. Hyatt, and, uh, Ms. Hanks, thanks you on regular basis.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions, yeah? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and forget, thank you for everything.
Ken?
Thank you so much. This is gonna be a document that we will be reading on those sleepless nights. And after we read through it, I'm sure we'll have nightmares about it, and I'm... Uh, but I think it's, this is a useful tool, if you appreciate the auditors. And, and I think, uh, the administration, they did a good job of, uh, pointing out, uh, how it was, the findings were gonna be addressed and all that, so everything's in there, our answers, our corrective action plans, they're all in there, so it's good, in general. Now, the action is to acknowledge that we received copies of the audit. Need a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay, motion for made to acknowledge, uh, that we got copies of the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen audit report, roll call.
Mr. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Mangalito?
So, um, just a clarification, again, sir, we're just acknowledging that we received the report?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ken?
I think when we have the full board sitting, then we will accept, we'll, we'll accept the audit report at that time.
Is there a, uh, further, please, is there a, is there a ready question, or do you need to add a line or something about that?
Okay, but thank you, Ken. So I guess we're done with this, and we need a motion?
To make a motion that we adjourned?
Okay, a motion is made to adjourn, roll call, Joe.
Mr. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Mangalito?
Oh.
Mr. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we adjourned the meeting at seven thirty-five, thank you for coming, everyone. I'd like to thank the assistant superintendents and the staff that came by. Uh, Mr. Campos, Ken, thank you for your help, our auditor- Cat, thank you for your help, our auditors, Ilo and Chikwana, thank you for being here. Uh, credes dona asso.